Evening, evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg, Tuesday, January 11th, 2022. Town meeting. This time I'll ask all individuals with phones to silence their phones in respect to decorum of the decorum of the meeting. And now I will ask everyone to please stand for the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, so our future meetings include the Stormwater Advisory Committee meeting, which will occur Thursday, January 20th, 2022 at 7:00 PM. This will be a Zoom-only meeting, a distance meeting. The Citizens Advisory Committee meeting will occur Tuesday, January 18th, 2022, at 7:30 PM at the town office. However, Mr. Sweeney, for the Citizens Advisory, will that be modified?
It will go into the next meeting, which will be.
Okay, so we're going to hold off on that meeting. Okay. Terrific, okay. Okay, thank you, sir. The Planning Commission meeting will occur on Monday, January 31st, 2022. That will occur at 7:00 PM here in the town office. Our next town council meeting will occur on February 7th, 2022, at 7:30 PM here at the town office, and it will also be on Zoom. Okay, so moving forward, any other items regarding meetings? Hearing none, I'll press on. I trust everyone had the opportunity to review the meeting minutes from the last meeting from December. Are there any modifications or enhancements that are sought? No? All right. Hearing none, is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the meeting minutes as presented.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Burns's motion?
I'll second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good, thank you. We now turn to the deputies for the deputies' report.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
How are you guys?
Hi, how are you?
Good. There's a monthly report for December. There's two of us working, myself and Ben. Used some vacation, had three sick days. One of us had COVID. We had Police One training. And Police One training, and I passed out Christmas gifts on Christmas Day to the kids in town. We handled 147 calls for service, had three arrests, did 71 direct patrols, 26 traffic stops, three wins card. Had a pretty bad assault on West Main. Arrested that person for first degree assault, still incarcerated. The bottom part, you can just cancel that out. That was from a previous thing. I accidentally added. It's pretty much all I have the report, other than my partner's leaving and going on to be a detective. I want to thank him for being an outstanding partner. Being a tremendous asset to this community, and I'm gonna miss him. I'm gonna miss him a lot.
We all will.
We all will. The sign out on coming west to east, the town of Emmitsburg sign, was that hit by something or?
So there was an accident, state's handling all that, and there was another accident that took down another sign on this end of town. Well, I have them all documented, and they were fixing them. I think they stood the 40 mile an hour sign back up, but.
Yeah.
And kind of just until the state could get out and fix it, so.
So additionally, and I know, I think the mayor announced it or emailed somewhere, the speed cameras, we got grants for three, correct?
If I can clarify that article real quick.
Yeah.
They are tag readers, not speed cameras, so there'll be no revenue generated from them. We will be putting the RFP out, RFP out to the contractors within the next month or two.
Okay, cool. So once we have the tag readers, then we can tie them into speed cameras, or how does that work? I'm just curious.
No, so I had a conversation with Sam De Lawrence at State Highway, and the only way that we can have speed cameras in town are in, is in a school zone. And the only school zone that it would apply to would be North Seaton. Something with the distance on Creamery that he said that it wouldn't work there, but we could have a further conversation down the road.
Okay, yeah, because I think Frank and I looked it up at one point, and I talked to the principal and vice-principal of Mother Seaton, like the half-mile line would qualify on East Main Street if they drew, depending on how they have to.
Right.
Buy that line or whatever. But I mean, I think between North Seaton and, I know where you guys patrol, it's East Main Street, South Seaton, and West Main Street, I mean, especially at this time of year, you can clean up for.
All day.
All day.
All day.
Especially with the visitors in town right now.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. And I don't know if you saw Friday and Saturday, it was quite interesting.
Years are back.
Yes, it was a wonderful weekend.
Yeah. Liberty opened on Friday for the first time, and everybody decided to flood in for the three runs that were open. Talk about a COVID-free environment up there.
Mr. Donald, is this the appropriate time?
Sure, that would be fine. Well, let me check. Any other commissioners have questions for the deputy regarding sheriff's office business at this time?
Nope, just thank you.
Okay, thanks for all your, all yours put in here for us. And come back to us.
Preferably not. Yeah, let's rephrase that. We hope we don't see you here for any business reasons.
Exactly right.
For any of our children or family members or anything like that.
Mr. Briggs, yes, sir. Deputy White House, could you come forward if you would, please?
Do we have somebody to take a picture?
I got you. The goal is to embarrass you, so be mindful.
On behalf of the town, town commissioners, myself, Mayor, I'd like to thank you for your years of service here. You're a real favorite. Just a certificate of appreciation, present the deputy first-class White House, President Deputy, in honor of his six years of dedicated service. Thank you for your outstanding service, tireless efforts, constant support to the town of Emmitsburg, its residents from 2017 to 2022. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. It's an honor. Thank you very much. We'll just speed over a little bit so we have the podium.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excellent.
Appreciate it very much.
Thanks, Ron. Thank you. Deputy, thank you very much for everything you've done consistently above and beyond. Looking forward to hearing about you as a detective and what that entails.
Okay.
So stay away from the doctors.
All right. All right. Thank you very much.
Yes. Perfect. We move forward. Return to the town manager for the town manager's report.
Yes, thank you. This is the town manager's report for November of 2021. I'll highlight some key areas related to streets outside of the normal street sweeping and storm drain inlet cleaning. Staff put up the new "America Goes to War," "America Goes to War Wayside" sign after being damaged. The sign was repaired, put back up, and then damaged again shortly thereafter. Staff also put up Christmas decorations and banners around town. Before that, they put up the Veterans Day banners and flags on East and West Main Street. Related to parks, staff winterized all the restroom buildings and dog park. They put a new trash can and picnic table at the pavilion by the community park bandstand. They moved the Porde Johns to the community park basketball court for the turkey trot, and staff picked up the trash cans and leaves at the farmer's market. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is still at the spillway level of 16.6 feet. Our lake quota is finally being met reliably. The storage tanks, number one, and number two were drained and cleaned. Our general discharge permit was renewed. We produced an average of 245,685 gallons and consumed an average of 231,313 gallons. The difference is the backwash water at about 17%. We purchased 431,150 gallons of water from Mount St. Mary's in the month of November. Related to wastewater, we treated an average of 704,000 gallons per day, consumed over 231,000 gallons per day, which meant 67% of the wastewater treated in November was wild water. We did not have any spills of untreated sewage, and we did not exceed the plant's design capacity anytime in November. We received an inch of precipitation. We currently have a surplus of 7.05 inches over the last six months. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in January. There's some, listed some of the meetings I attended in November. Noteworthy items, staff assisted with repairing a water leak at well number two. The staff pumped out some fire hydrants that did not drain from the flushing. We repaired a water leak in front of 331 North Seaton Avenue, as well as the water leak on West Lincoln Avenue by the pool. Staff assisted with marking utilities at the new site for the pump station for rudders. They also located and checked all the curb boxes in the empty lots in South Gate. Calibrated all the meters at the water and wastewater treatment plant. On Irishtown Road, the new 10-inch water line has been installed and tested, and it's currently tied into our system. Staff's working with the rudders contractor on piping installation for both water and sewer, and they are working with Federal Stone to locate all active pipes, rightaways, and our force main. And that's the manager's report.
Any questions for the manager related to her report?
The 500 had to be pumped out. Are we, we have anything, are we going to replace those 500s? They're not draining at the bottom?
Um, we haven't, yeah, we haven't just talked about it yet. We're hoping it was just a one-time occurrence, but if there's a need be, then we'll get some estimates together to replace them.
If they're not draining the weeples or clogs or rusted shut, so they'll have to be replaced. If not, they'll, they'll.
Continue to back up.
Yeah, they'll end up freezing busting.
Okay.
Any other questions for the town manager? Thank you. Sweeney, anything? I'm sorry, another one. Okay, moving forward, we now turn to the town planners' report.
Hello, everybody. This is the planner's report for November. So under commissioners, we worked with our attorney on 507 East Main Street hazardous building determination. We applied for and were successful in obtaining administrative search warrant with Frederick County District Court. We, I created a proclamation honoring Joyce Rosenstiel tonight under Grant's Community Legacy. For fiscal year '22, I started processing applications. The application period is now closed. I processed a reimbursement request under the ramps project, conducted four construction inspections, two employee interviews, submitted traffic control permit application for ramp 33. I attended a pre-construction meeting for that ramp. I processed weekly payroll reports. Processed a payment request number four, which includes field measurements of 16 ramps, grant reimbursement request number four, had a progress meeting. As of November 30th, we had 59 of 130 ramps completed for community development block grant for the DePaul Street water line. I researched the possibility of grant funds for this project and found out we may be eligible. We have to conduct an income survey, which we did. We submitted the survey methodology and all documents to community development block grant staff for review and approval. If you know anyone in the two apartment complexes, please let them know to return their surveys, their income surveys. I processed and I mailed 82 of them to DePaul Street residents. Cleanup in Greenup, Maryland, Grant, I submitted that final report, MS4. Under the Silo Hill Basin Project, I worked with the contractor, and we applied for the Chesapeake and Coastal Grant for 199,000. I submitted the construction plan to Frederick County for permitting. Under the tree planting project, I attended a tree planting event on the 6th. I finalized Daughters of Charity Tree Planting easement. Under the Stormwater Utility Feasibility Study Project, I attended a meeting on the 16th. I also had a virtual meeting on the 18th and one on the 30th. Under permits, five zoning permit applications, eight backflow preventer, one no permit needed, one street closure, six high-hazard backflow permit renewal letters, and responded to various incident reports. Planning Commission, the new Creamy Road pump station, we worked with the attorney on preparing the two deeds. The Irishtown Road project reviewed various construction reports. Village Liquors, we worked with their attorney on the utility deeds of easements. I received, processed, and provided a staff memo on the final subdivision plan. And for rudders, we continue to work with the engineer on sewer construction specification approvals. Miscellaneous, I attended department head meeting and financial review meeting, and I also, for number seven, new business development updates. You can see there. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Great. Any questions for the town planner related to his report?
I have one. Yes, sir. Irishtown Road, are they projecting that be open again anytime soon?
Yeah, so I actually got word today, since the temperature is going to be above 40 degrees tomorrow, they will be applying the rest of the asphalt to the rest of Irishtown Road. They will also be milling and overlaying Brookfield Drive from Timber Mill to Irishtown Road. We are doing that because there was heavy damage to the road from construction, so, yeah, so it should be pretty much completed. A lot of it completed tomorrow. Not stating the streetlights and little odds and ends. However, they will be doing the final coat next year when all the lots are completed.
And it'll open before that, though.
Yes, yep. It should be open. I think we approved the permit to the 14th of January, so it'll be open then.
All right, cool.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yes, Mr. Ritz?
Two questions for Mr. Golden. One, the first regarding 507 East Main. What are the next steps in timeline regarding that property?
Sure, so we ordered a mold report, and we also ordered a structural engineer report. Both were conducted. We're waiting to hear back from the structural engineer. That should be any day now.
Okay.
Depending on that determination, then we would bring it back to the board for determine if it is a structural hazardous building.
All right, thank you. The second was the maps and property information created for the mayor regarding all the properties. Is that something that we'll eventually be able to see as well?
Yeah, yeah, I can absolutely send it to you.
That'd be interesting.
I believe the main reason the mayor wanted those maps were to show the board, so we can, I can email those to you tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Sure. I have no other questions.
Thank you. Any other questions for the town planner at this time regarding his report? All right, so we move forward. Okay, so at this time, we turn to the commissioner comments. Commissioner Burns?
Thank you. Just one quick thing to kind of follow up with Mr. Golden said about the funding. There was a recent letter released by MML and their e-Bolton about drinking and stormwater funding. There's going to be a fund for the drinking water revolving loan fund that I know staff is in the process of applying for, and that's going to be used directly for water sewer clarifiers. I mean, it's a pretty broad outline of what that funding can be used for, for, especially for a town like ourselves where, you know, we're constantly applying for grants and stuff like that. There's a lot of money set aside for that, that even though we may have lost one grant fund, I have full faith in Mr. Golden and Ms. Willis to be able to apply for those and, and see that so that we can have some money for North Seaton Pipelines, DePaul Street, the water clarifier. I'm sure there's probably a couple other ones that were, that are in there as well, but that's huge. The Maryland has recognized that, you know, this is something that needs attention, and they've put the money out there for it that we can apply for, and hopefully now we will be able to get the grants for that and can move forward with all those water lines and things of that nature. And the last thing I'll say on a personal note, even though all the other football teams are out of it, let's go Eagles.
Oh, wow. Let's go Cowboys.
There we go. Interesting. So let it be said. All right, very good. Commissioner Davis?
I'm just like to thank the staff for what they did with the town and the Christmas decorating. Got a lot of good, good comments. Matter of fact, it even made an article in the paper, I believe. Yep. It might have been talked about at last month's meeting that I missed, but I think that the town really did look nice. And the only other thing I got is, I know last month there was a discussion about the fees for the ball fields. Is that going to become an agenda item at some point, or is it?
It's actually on this agenda. Commissioner Ritz pointed it out. It was added to the agenda a couple weeks ago. And in my haste to get the agenda packet out, I accidentally dropped it off, so it's actually on the agenda for this meeting. It should be in your third agenda packet that I sent out.
I must have missed it. Sorry about that.
Is it possible these are on the desk? It's all I got.
You got the right one.
Did we put, we put new, yeah, the new agenda package should be on your desk.
Okay.
With the ball field in there.
Mr. Davis, you want to double-check that?
Yeah, it was the third version of it. I apologize.
There's been a dynamic situation in the town office, so it's understandable. All right, very good. Commissioner Ritz?
Yeah, not much this evening. Just, I hope everybody had a great Christmas, and boy, it really flew by. And thank you, Mr. Hillman, for coming to our meeting. It's nice having a press corps here. Yes, I always thank her too, so. That's all I have. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Commissioner Sweeney?
I'd like to thank everybody for, I hope they have a nice, have a nice Christmas and Thanksgiving, and thank the town for the cleanup they did on the snow day we had already. Streets and stuff were really taken care of pretty nicely. I wanted to mention, other than the meeting I have for the Citizens Advisory, it's been canceled. There was two main events coming up in town for the, for the Knights of Columbus and the, and the Lions Club for Heritage Day. We had to cancel both for, for the, for the Valentine's Day dance and the drawing we had for this month, which will be next week, because we, the virus spiking, and we couldn't getting enough tickets sold. So we're having an emergency meeting this week coming to see what we can do to make up the funds for the, for the Heritage Day, so we can have for next, we always work for the year ahead. We have enough for this year, but we won't have anything left if we don't raise any money this year, so. I'll let you know what kind of fundraising things that'll come up, and hopefully the town can help us with the fireworks and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Sweeney, when do we usually give you the check for the fireworks? For the Lions Club, the check for the fireworks?
The paper should be coming out to all the businesses and stuff, the, all the letters, donation letters should be sent out next month.
Okay.
They'll be sent out, and then the, also the veterans, all the veterans banners that we've been, everybody's, well, they've been working on. I heard from Dale Shields that they, they are expecting them to be done in the end of March to be put up. And I think he said he had like 60 some of them so far.
How many?
60 some. I think Jimmy, he's been in contact with Jimmy.
Okay.
And told him he had 90 some light posts in town, so hopefully we won't get over 90. And, but it'd be nice to get 90 for the veterans in town, so.
Right.
Right now, they're 60 some. I think he told me they won't be.
Okay.
But they'll be completed by the end of, and I think CPS of the printing place in town, the, the other printing place in town is going to be doing it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. Okay, I'll try to keep it super quick and start with some mundane things. Turkey Trot t-shirts are finally on the press. There were some delays and significant delays regarding supplies and provisioning with our vendor, so my understanding is they will be done at the end of this week, but I'm told they are on the press now. I was contacted by the staff at St. Joseph's related to a sidewalk ramp for DePaul Street. They still wanted to know that they're very interested in seeing that happen. They understand that it can't be part of the existing program where the ramps are being modified with the tactile piece, but they still want to convey that the interest is there. They still want to see that, that depressant, sort of the hammock slung access point. I was contacted by a county regarding its trail program. I'll give you some more information about that in a little while. I was contacted by an individual in town regarding a concern related to a social media post regarding a health issue, and I will be carrying that forward to the Health Department. The trick is, when an anonymous post comes forward, the substantiation is a bit of a difficult thing, so it will be pursued to the best of my energy, but I think there needs to be some corroboration there. I would anticipate some maybe apprehension on the Department, the County Health Department's action, but I don't know. I've not dealt with them before in this context. The library staff has contacted me yet again following up on their first request. September 15th will be the centennial anniversary of this building. And as such, they're doing a museum-quality display, and they're asking the town if we could find $80 to $100 in our budget somewhere to contribute to their efforts. So I will put that to the board in a formal way, I guess, unless we can do it informally, urging the mayor and staff to find that $100 to support them. They do say that the, the signs out front do bring people in, but also people have been visiting the area who attended school here, and they're really interested in seeing how it's been adaptively reused. So our building still has life in it, absolutely, and their hope is to make a pretty cool display in the community meeting room downstairs.
If they could send an email request of the dollar amount or a letter to myself and the mayor.
Okay.
Asking for the, for this donation, it's something that we, we do have money set aside for special events and programs. So I don't think there needs to be a formal action item if they go ahead and send us.
Terrific.
Something asking for it.
I will share.
And what it would go towards.
Great. I will share that with them tomorrow. That's terrific. Thank you.
Do you need more than $100? I mean, not.
I'm sure, I'm sure they would, to be the truth, so if other groups.
Bring it up to Lions Club and stuff.
I'm sure they would love as, as much support as they can garner, so for the record. So those conclude my comment. Oh, snow day. To staff, thank you so much. The clearing curb-to-curb for the most part was outstanding and expedient. I was barely able to get in every neighborhood and then had to go very far south to my mom's 90th birthday. So if people were trying to get ahold of me, which I doubt, I was south. Okay, that, those conclude my comments. Mr. Mayor, we turn to you, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening, everybody. Happy New Year. Just a couple of things hap, you know, we had our Christmas tree lighting that went well. Also in December, we had a podcast with President Traynor. That was well in person. We're going to try to get these things rolling again with people. It's, the next one will be February 17th. It'll be a podcast with County Executive Gardner, but it'll be a Zoom podcast. It's get back to those 20-minute programs we've had in the past and get them going up. I met with the developer in a Zoom meeting. We met Zach Gold, Leslie Power, Attorney Bruce Dean, Richard Admit, and I think we're working pretty well with them right now to bring this about. Right now, I think there are 10 permits have been issued to Ryan Holmes along Brookfield Road, not up Brookfield, excuse me, Irishtown Road, and one's to the Hopper, so pre-sales are pretty strong, and it looks like the prices are averaging around $500,000 per home, so things are going well, and Mr. Admit is to engage with the owners of Emmett Ridge, and we'll see how that plays out. And he's, and we can finish out a little bit more of Irishtown Road. Like we said, they, they're going to close down the paving plants, you know, end of this month, and so if we get some warm weather here, we'll get that first layer down, and that, that's where we want to be. Helped the Lions Club drop gift cards with my wife Libby, Connie Capriva, and Sharon Haynes over Lincoln Old Park. I spoke at a tribute to Denny. He bought a mast at St. Joseph's Church for his 40 years of service, and there was a party after that that congratulations to Denny. I, I think he's coming out of retirement to help him out, but it's not full-time. Visited with Sunsign Management. They own, they manage the, and I think they owned it also, DePaul Street Property Apartments there to help the efforts of our town planner and trying to get the grant money for the water lines there. We're still trying to get the million dollars for the clarifier, and, and we're, you know, we're trying to run down, chase everybody, so. We're still trying to get the million dollars for the clarifier and, and we're, you know, we're trying to run down, chase everybody. So we're going to intensify that. It's been approved, but just no one seems to want to pick up the phone and has this reason for that reason not to. I, I hope you all saw the article in the Frederick News Post by, I think it's Pat Weller. She writes there, she's writing, wrote today, but how it was to come in Damitsburg and see all the Christmas tree decorations and how attractive it was and stunning and just she was just really enjoyed that. Again, we, we're kicking off the year. We're going to get into the budget. We're, we're having some changes on the staff, a lot of things happening, but I think we're as it's, it's good. It's just that time and there, there's a lot of bidding out there for services of young people and we're going to just get to prepare ourselves for this next edition of running the town. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hagan, I have you signed up. It appears to be for the fees. Is that correct? Okay, thank you. All right. So we now move to our administrative business items. Mr. Mayor, again, we turn to you, I believe, for the proclamation thanking former Commissioner Joyce Rosenstiel for her services to the town of Emmitsburg.
Yes, you, thank you very much. We have it here. We'll either, maybe she'll be the tenant set that the thirty first meeting or, or if not, when the other members are seated for first time, but proclamation, let here be, be known on the, on the occasion of this recognition of the services that this, excuse me, eleventh day of January, two thousand twenty-two, the town of Emmitsburg hereby extends sincere gratitude and heartfelt appreciation to Joyce Rosenstiel for her service provided between the year two thousand two, two thousand twenty-two. It is hoped that this Rose Steel will continue to be a presence and resource to the town of Emmitsburg community for many years to come. It'll be signed. I think we got it right here by myself and Commissioner O'Donnell. And thank you, thank you, Joyce, if you're out there listening. And you were also a former commissioner and all this, you know, gave a lot of to our wonderful community. Take care.
Great. Thank you, sir. Okay. The second administrative business item is mine. I'm going to be rude, guys. Bear with me. Let's see if I get to work. Okay, so that's about as obnoxious I want to get tonight. So bear with me. I'm here to talk about trails and I'd like to provide an update on the multi-user trail and the ringing of the bell is not just to be rude and obnoxious, but rather to drive home a certain idea that we have a lot of activity here. We can have more activity here. The trails can be part of that, but I, I think we, we need to look very, very directly at maybe an expanded Main Street program. And that's kind of where I'm going on this one. An RTP grant, a recreational trail program grant was sought from the state of Maryland and the disappointing news about it was we were denied and the grant itself sought these things. Funds to repair trails of the red and orange trails, funds for trailhead signage, funds for on-trail signage, fund for a youth loop at the Scott Road Farm and funds for enhancing parking at Rainbow Lake. Now, the folks at State Highway who evaluate the grant actually sent us a very polite and encouraging decline letter, rejection letter, and it says, the RTP Advisory Committee has considered Moore's application because this was done through the Moore Organization and how the proposed project would contribute to local, regional and statewide trail systems. The committee supports the intent of the project. Unfortunately, the committee is not able to provide the requested funding during this application cycle because of concerns about damage to the existing red trail from forestry work, that the application provided no explanation of how such damage will be prevented once the trails are reestablished and that the youth trail lacked connectivity or public parking. So they're, they're really kind of, and the conversations I had, they want to invest the money on trails. They, they'd rather, they want to invest more money with trails. But the, the forestry thing was something that they had pretty significant concern with. The connectivity, they want to know how young people are going to be gable, will be able to get to a youth loop, like a small natural surface trail at the Scott Road Farm, and they wanted to see where the parking would be. They encouraged us. The committee recommends the more that more work with RTP staff to address these concerns and reapply in spring of two thousand twenty-two. So I do intend to do that with more. So that's the status of the grant. We were declined. We were rejected. They gave us specific reasons why. And it's, it's a little bit frustrating because we had that bond in place. The premise was that if damage was to occur, to have occurred to the trail, the bond would be utilized to make those repairs. Now, we've circumnavigated that where we're using different funds that the town has provided. That's appreciated. That work will be moving forward soon, but it, it, it's a bit frustrating that that's what prevented us from getting what might have been part of what prevented us from getting what would have been a really positive enhancement to our grant system, to our trail system. Sorry. Okay, moving forward, the popularity of trails and this kind of expanding the idea here. So I appreciate you guys being patient with me. The popularity of trails continues to grow, especially locally. Catoctin Mountain Park is starting a trail review process to update and modify its extensive trail network. Mount Ari and New Market are in the early stages of developing mountain biking and hiking trails on town-owned land in their communities. Brunswick's River Edge Trail is continuously upgrading and expanding its mountain biking offerings. And in September of this year, the second weekend, they're going to be hosting a Nike youth event. That's the closest one to Emmitsburg. And I would greatly appreciate if any commissioner or staffer could attend to attend to get a sense as to the scope and scale of what these events are, where up to three thousand people converge on the town. There's a great deal of money spent. And they stay in the hotel, the new hotel. They use the local campground and a, a lot of spending takes place, but a lot of happy takes place too. So I'm hoping that we, at a, at a future time, will be able to have more trails where we can host a Nike event like that. Now, to that end, you know, I always talk about this notion of supporting entrepreneurial businesses. Like we're, we're not going to get some Messiah Amazon warehouse here. It's always in our best interest to grow our local companies and to support them as best we can. By the same token, we have two Nike teams, one in Frederick County, the Monocacy Composite Team. We have one across the line in Adams County. And for the past two years, they've held events here and now they want to merge their events and expand it here. So this growth is actually happening. So we're seeing it, but my worry is that their size will outgrow our trails. So I'm hoping that we can add trails in the future. The Thurmont Regional Library just opened a reading trail and their trolley trail will eventually link Frederick and Emmitsburg. So again, this trail popularity is not just a flash in the pan with COVID. It's a steady, continuous, ongoing thing. Our Emmitsburg Disc Golf Trail seems to be in constant use by disc golfers and walkers and even some cyclists are out there from what I understand. In two thousand twenty-two, the Emmitsburg Trails has been approached by a number of walking groups for their events, potentially a rucking group, I understand. Rucking, not in the rugby sense, Mr. Mayor, but rucking means hiking with heavy weights. It is a special forces thing, I'm told. I think that's rather fantastic. As we've been approached by trail running clubs and to the two local Nike clubs that I mentioned. So what it really means is we'll have more local visits and hopefully more local spending. And these are things that I truly want to encourage. Emmitsburg or community is viewed as a model in trail using, as a model in trail use. In the past years, I've been contacted by municipalities, elected officials, nonprofit executives and many, many mountain bikers, trail runners and hikers about our network. How do we do it? How does it get done? And in many ways, I've sort of consulted with them or I've coached them and we've had a lot of success. There is value here in investing in our own trails and I would like to see us do more investment with our trails. Grants and donations are wonderful. Town funding also, I think, would be a very strong resource for us if we can expand that. I know our budgets are tight at times, but I think if we find a creative way to do this, we can use it in an appropriate way to enhance the value of our quality of life. Moving from there, I only have this much to go. So please hang in there. All right. I intend to pursue more grants in the development of more natural surface trails. Nike and the university have both expressed interest in participating in the design and development of trails on the Scott Road Farm, when it eventually does become available, if the town would consider allowing access to the farm for this purpose. I also think people who are hiking and walking in our area within our community would certainly love that opportunity for the rolling countryside, the access to the views of the mountain and just a beautiful scene to hike and ride through. The town should actively pursue a vision of both natural surface trails and paved trails, such as the type which are in constant use in community park. I don't know if you saw the MML article that was published recently, but they talk about how there's been an upsurge in hiking and it's not just natural surface trails. It's also paved trails. There'd be great value if we were to require development, whether it's residential, institutional or commercial to have trails around their land, walking trails, like hard paved, ten foot wide, ten foot wide trails. I think that would really enhance the community and the feedback I get whenever I talk about trails, it comes forward. People say, we really should be doing these things. We would see more runs, rides, bikes and rucks perhaps on these trails if they were available to us. So for what it's worth. More physical activity really will enhance our community further. You often hear the complaint, though it's not often founded, in my humble opinion, there's nothing to do here, especially with our young people. If we have an elaborate set of trails, be they paved and natural surface, we have a safe place for our young people to go out and get a healthy activity and to do good things. Additionally, you've heard me preach this before, that STEM workers look for a quality of life and STEM jobs follow. They look for a place that has a good outdoor recreational footprint and well, we have that. It doesn't have much visibility though. And that's why I think that a Main Street, a Main Street type program would benefit that. The last piece will jump in and we have this to look forward to and then I'll ring the bell one last time. The trails speak to the vitality of our community. You know, I obsess about books. You know, I obsess about magazines that list best places to live and the characteristics that make them best places to live. We have most of these things. And in those lists, you will almost universally see having trails as part of that quality of life enhancement. Okay, we have the athletic fields. We have the programs. One of the things they talk about also is other strong institutions. For example, having an active and strong volunteer community. I submit to you the Lions Club, the Knights and certainly the Vigilant Host Company where, you know, the, the measure of volunteer engagement is profound. Another piece they mentioned in these lists of best places to live are engaged and innovative libraries. We have that. We have all these pieces. I would like us to pursue, pursue the trail piece. Our outdoor recreational opportunities abound. Expanding our trail offerings will only enhance Emmitsburg is an outstanding place to live. So that is my pitch. Here's my last ring. Get to hear more of that in the future. If you go to a trail event or a riding event or a running event. So I appreciate your time. And at this time, I leave our administrative business and jump over to our next agenda item.
Have you taken any questions with the administrative?
Sure. If anybody wants to throw in questions, yeah, I, I thought you would suffer too much, but yes.
No, I, and I, I asked this because we spent a lot of time up on the mountain in various capacities. Mount St. Mary's has expanded their trail system up behind the grotto. They have the orange trail that leads, I'm sorry, it's the maroon trail that leads to Indian Lookout. And then there is also a connector trail off there, which they've labeled the yellow trail that goes to Carrick Rock.
I believe so.
And they've expanded a nice system there, which sits directly above your orange connector trail and then directly above the purple trail as well. Now, the quick.
Sort of.
Sort of. It's, it's there.
Go ahead.
Yeah. So the question becomes, are we taking up with what the town owns in property with all those orange and purple trails? Is there room for expansion within those trails to use Mount St. Mary's trails that are connected and connect them all together to expand upon all that? Or is that private property in certain areas?
So as I understand it from the maps, and unfortunately our maps are kind of primitive, but there are places where town land abuts university land.
Correct.
But the connectivity there is challenging. I'll say it that way. There are, if you look at the university land, much of it is on the east slope and some of it's facing southward as well. The town on land, for the most part, faces westward and northward. So they're on two almost opposite slopes where they have that overlap. It's possible. There are a couple of issues though. And the universal question is, who's going to maintain it? How will that be? How will that maintenance be funded? And that's always a difficult piece. The other part is the, and I consulted with the university. They brought me over and I spent, you know, a couple of days over there with them on, on some of their projects with their person at the time, their trail manager. Their trails weren't designed as trails. They were more social trails. So they're heavily eroded. They too were pursuing an RTP grant. So I think at some future point in time, can it happen? Yes, that would be awesome. The one variable in the equation, and this goes back to the trail feasibility study that was done with Joe Lebher's years ago, you know, God rest his soul. Where a concern arose about social trail use above the grotto where we agreed that that kind of had to be a no-fly zone in deference to, you know, the spirituality of the grotto itself. So but beyond that, could it happen? Yes. Funding, question mark. And the quality of our trails far exceeds the quality of their trails as more sustainable. So that would be that there would be a cost benefit for them to redesign their trail.
So then I kind of posed this question to our former fire commissioner, Mr. Davis. And since I've known, they've had to go on several calls down in the Catoctin area where they've had to do various rescues and things of that nature. Would expanding upon those trails create issues for the fire department and fire rescue if, if, if issues were to arise? I know there's been several calls and a Commissioner Davis's department has responded in conjunction with Thurmont to various issues down there and things of that nature. I don't know if that would cause issues with the expansion of our trails for, for his department and, you know, his former staff and things of that nature. So I don't know if that's been, you know, thrown out there as well.
It's, it's always a possibility, but it's, it's something we can deal with, something we can be prepared for if, if the use goes up and it's a good thing for the town. We'll, we'll adapt to it. Yeah, no, no worse than the, the traffic accidents we're going to run because of the ski season.
Right.
Okay. So we'll make it work.
All right. We, we had the, we had a member of the Vigilant Host Company and at the time, the ambulance company is part of the feasibility study. And they weighed in pretty heavily about those things and they proposed improved signage and a grid system to identify location to help people better, you know, say, hey, I'm in trouble and I'm near marker ten.
Okay.
And that gives us a, a good kind of grid.
I'm just trying to think about the, you know, the various road, you know, speed bumps that might pop up as we continue down that path. Cause I, you know, obviously, you know, we've taken the four-wheelers up on top of the mountain and there's, it, it's gorgeous up there and on, on certain trails, don't worry. We avoid, we avoid yours. We avoid yours. And you know, there's obviously, there's, there's room for expansion up there and which would be some gorgeous downhill sections. But again, you know, just the issues of, you know, people getting lost and things of that nature. I know there was a Mount St. Mary's student years ago who got lost and they ended up having to fly some people in and stuff like that. So just, you know, speed bumps of, you know, can we find the people and things of that nature if, if and when it comes?
I think if we were to put energy into partnering with the university, and I think we should, I think our effort would be better utilized on the Scott Road Farm. And the reason I say that is the terrain is much friendlier. There are visual landmarks with the mountain itself for navigational purposes. Right now there are, you know, trees grow. But also just the terrain itself is less taxing. So that's, I honestly, I'd like to see us put our energy there, but also because there are social trails on the Scott Road Farm, four-wheeler trails, there's the duck pond trails and so on. So it's not like it's virgin land, but the other piece is it's very inviting. And if you have young people riding or new riders, it's a great point of entry to something that's, you know, a lifelong wellness piece.
We'd have to readdress for Deputy Ahal there, getting him that four-wheel drive vehicle back out there.
Sure.
The Scott Road.
Maybe get him a Gator. Yeah. Very good. Okay. Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
I just thank you, just the staff, myself, we kept kind of working on some of these properties like Fraley and Boger and Trout, these large properties that are coming out that we would kind of incorporate the plan that city of Frederick has with ten-foot wide shared pathways around as part of their program. And I know it's, some people say, well, that may attract people to our community that invade our privacy if we have that, but as the gentleman over here, Mr. Vaughn, head of security over there essentially, they really encourage having people walking around. As the gentleman over here, Mr. Vaughn, head of security over there essentially, they really encourage having people walking around because it. It, it, it's, it's for security reasons, more people looking at, but we're, we're just sort of drafting around it. Working on a couple of things like that, we like to. We're, and we're working on that and they present something to you all about that because it's. It long year, what you're talking about it, these communities really want these assets where they can get out and walk safely and also bike safely and. So we're working on the same way. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions for the long-winded commissioner? None, very good. No surprise. Okay, so we press on, we turn now to our consent agenda. Item one, accepting the resignation of Dr. Bernard Franklin from the planning commission effective December ten, twenty twenty one.
I do each item as just a unanimous, unanimous consent for each item.
Okay. Do we have consent for accepting the resignation of Dr. Bernard Franklin from the planning commission?
Yes.
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 Yes, very good, okay. We accept Dr. Franklin's resignation. The appointment of Kevin Hagan as a regular member of the planning commission with the term of December ten, twenty twenty one through July second, twenty twenty two. Do we have consent for this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, Mr. Ritz, I said, did you say yes?
Yes.
Oh, very good, okay. All right, we hereby appoint Mr. Hagan to that position. Congratulations, sir. The appointment of Amy Bachman Polit as a regular member of the planning commission. With a term of January eighteenth, twenty twenty two through January eighteenth, twenty twenty seven. Do we have consent for this?
Yes.
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 I'm going to abstain from that. I don't think it'd be a conflict of interest, but just in case it's perceived, I did nominate Ms. Bo- Bonham, Bowman Polit to the mayor. So I'm not going to vote on that.
All right, thank you, sir. Does that satisfy consent?
Yeah, that's fine.
Was an abstention? Is there a, Mr. Sweeney, sir?
Why is Mr. Higgins twenty two, it's going to end this year? Does he just feel, feeling the, uh, uh, persons out?
Yeah, he's going to fill in for Dr. Bernard Franklin. And then, um. Yep, he'll be back, he's here. Right.
We can hold his feet to the fire, Mr. Sweeney.
Does he have to resign off the commission?
One more time? He, he, he has, that's whatever, right, that's what number one would be is. Okay, so we turn to number four, appointment of Terry Ray as an alternate to the planning commission. With the term of January eleventh, twenty twenty two. Excuse me, through June twenty seventh, sorry, June seventh. Twenty twenty six. We have consent.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes, very good. All items carry, so congratulations to Ms. Ray and. Ms. Bowman Polit, my apologies, and Mr. Hagan, thank you all very much. And we say thank you to Dr. Bernard Franklin for his service to the community. We now turn to the treasurer for the treasurer's report.
Good evening, this is the treasurer's report for January eleventh, twenty twenty two. This is the cash activity as of December thirty first, twenty twenty one, we had a cash balance on December first, twenty twenty one of seven million, six hundred and eighty one thousand, five hundred and sixty. We had deposits in the amount of five hundred and thirty seven thousand, seven hundred and forty two, withdrawals in the amount of five hundred and thirty five thousand, seven hundred and fifty four. With left us with an operating balance forward of seven million, six hundred and eighty three thousand, five hundred and forty eight. The top ten checks are listed below and if you have any questions, please so ask.
I don't believe we have any questions.
No.
Okay, very good. All right, so we turn the page. And I'll go to the planning commission report, Mr. Golden.
Thanks, Mr. Golden. Planning commission met on December ninth, we conditionally approved the final subdivision plat for Village Liquors and Plaza Inn. Just to let everyone know that the owner developer of the plat. That's immediately east of the current Duncan. Requested his parcel to be subdivided into two lots. His intent is to build two buildings, first phases. As you know, it'll be a liquor store on the floor level and then. Two lodging floors above that and then in the future phase two, a similar building with retail on the first floor with lodging above. It's pretty much it. Any questions?
Hotel as in lodging or? When you, when you define, how do you define lodging?
It's, yeah, hotel, more of an extended stay suite type lodging.
Do they specify how many units?
I believe it's ten. Or is it twenty?
It's twenty.
Ten per floor.
It is technically a hotel, but it will be extended stay. So they're going to be required to have fully furnished hotel rooms, linens and all that.
Is this intended to serve the university or is it intended to serve the highway travelers or?
Whoever.
Yeah, it's really whoever.
It's, it's Mister.
Designated, none, okay.
Mister Sandy, who, who, who talked to us before? Yeah, just he changed, he changed his business plan around.
Okay. Does, is there a timetable for the second structure if the first structure were to get approval in the final?
He has not given me a timed timeframe.
Okay, has he given a timeline for the first structure?
Since he's subdividing the property, he has to bring in his plans again, because it's a new tax parcel. So he will be bringing those in the next month or two. To the planning commission for reapproval and then he's supposed to be starting soon. But he hasn't given me an exact date.
My understanding is he, once he gets that approval, then he can, he can break ground and.
Right.
Run with it.
Perfect, thank you. All right, any other information from the planning commission at this time?
No, none, I just wanted to state though, I don't know who's on, on the call for Zoom. I think we only had one person sign up for public comment this evening, Mr. Hagan. If anybody is on the call speaking to agenda item two. I apologize, I did, I did reach out to an individual who brought the, that idea to us. And I think I, I neglected to remind him to officially sign up to speak. So I don't know if he's on the call or not.
He is in the call.
Okay, so that's on me, I apologize, but I'm, I'm, I'm sure he would like to, to chime in on that agenda item.
Okay. We want to give that opportunity, I mean, they are not signed up, they missed that, but.
I'm okay with it, I can go over the email fortunately that was passed on to me from Commissioner Ritz regarding the proposal. Staff did some looking into it, some investigation on it. And I can address what the staff and the mayor's concerns are with the proposal. And then I don't have a problem, is, it's Mr. Vaughn, correct?
Yes.
If he wanted to add anything.
Very good, okay.
So basically his request is to add what they call a sub meter. So the water line comes into the.
Well, I'm sorry. So we're, we're done with planning commission.
Yes, I, yes, that was my segue there, sorry, but I, I think you probably needed to address agenda item one being postponed.
Do that and then we will come right back to you, very good, okay, Mr. Rich, thank you.
Yep.
All right, we turn now to agenda item one, it has been postponed, therefore we now turn to agenda item number two. And now we return to, well, it's the town manager, yes ma'am.
All right, so, so agenda item number two is in response to a request from Mr. Vaughn. Basically, the request is to allow what they call a sub meter for irrigation purposes. So your main water line or your lateral comes into your house with a water meter and the water meter is read. Quarterly by staff and that's how we determine how many gallons. Of water has been used at each residence. So it's my understanding that some of these newer homes that are being built, they are built with the ability to have. A line come off on the inside for irrigation purposes. So. I believe what Mr. Vaughn's asking is for a sub meter to be put on that line that goes out for irrigation. So that he can only be billed for. He can be billed for the total of the water used minus the water that was used for irrigation in the calculation of the sewer bill. We, he quoted the W S S C, which has a million. Customers in his calculations and everything, so we reached out to. Some local municipalities and the only one that we found. Through our initial research was Thermont and. Thermont treats it as an entirely another water connection. Because you have to have another meter put in. So they charge their water connection fee, water impact fee. And then the homeowner would have to make the installation and pay for the meter. Our concern is, is less about the charges for that. As you guys can recall, or we can all recall, over the last three, five years. We get into mid to late summer and we're in drought conditions. And according to this email here. The typical user registers about twenty seven thousand gallons of water used for irrigation purposes in a ninety day period. As you know, we're always struggling for water when we get to the droughts, we are low on our water taps. Our concern is obviously water usage in town. We try to encourage conservation and green efforts. I think if this is allowed, it's going to encourage people to, to irrigate their lawns and water their grass. And then you're going to see more water usage go up during those times. And that's a concern of ours as, as like I just mentioned, we, we struggle. On our water. Levels, especially at Rainbow Lake and our wells during the summer and fall months. Not on top of that, then there's billing concerns of. Reading two meters and then someone in accounting is going to have to subtract the irrigation. Meter or the sub meter off the main meter. Calculate the water usage and then subtract out some of the sewer usage. It's going to complicate the efforts in accounting that is already. Extremely busy. So those are our concerns with this proposal. I know I've talked about it with the mayor and. Staff does not endorse this request.
Any questions for the town manager?
I don't at this time.
Mr. Davis? Now just make a comment, it's kind of redundant when we say we don't want people to. To take care of their yards and their trees and things and we're planting thousands of trees. It doesn't. And plus, I think it would be an easier way to, to monitor somebody using their irrigation system if there's a separate meter. Because if we, we did their meter read in. May or whenever we do it and we go into a drought and we put a restriction on. Well, you can see that they're, they're using that meter to water their grass, that's all I got.
That's a good point.
So a question maybe for Mr. Golden, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
A question for Mr. Golden, th- this is just coming to me, so I'm sorry and I'm not trying to put you in any hot seat here, but. Playing devil's advocate. We have a formula that's provided to us by the state regarding how many taps are created and I think it's based on. Not our water production, but by our sewer treatment capacity, is that accurate?
No, it's, it's two hundred and fifty gallons per day.
Just the standard.
Standard, yep, for water and sewer.
So. Does this give us any advantage in creating? Two classes of taps where you have the primary household tap, which is what we're using, we'll say, and this. What do we call this, a sub? A sub meter? So does the sub meter give us any advantage in allowing for more taps? I don't know.
In, in a planning perspective, I'm very concerned about this proposal.
Okay.
We only have a hundred and thirty, two hundred and fifty taps and. Based on the calculations of twenty seven thousand gallons per ninety days, divide that then by. Twenty seven thousand divided by ninety and then you divide that by two fifty. That's a one point two taps for each property. It's scary because when we're looking for new development. And we start eating away our taps just at irrigation and existing houses. We're not going to have enough for any future businesses or future housing developments.
Okay, so it's limiting us as opposed to expanding.
It's limiting us.
Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Sure.
So I guess several questions then. Number one, would the extra revenue generated by these taps? Allow us to start looking towards the additional clarifier and things of that nature at the water treatment plant?
So what I'm looking at, so just for example, what Thermont said. Our water connection fee is eight thousand.
Eighty two hundred.
Eighty two hundred, we do not have a water impact fee. So for the additional connection would be, this, I'm just going off of Thermont's example, would be eighty two hundred dollars for essentially an additional tap. And then build at the water rate of whatever the water rate is per ten thousand or per thousand gallons. It would depend on how many people would sign up.
Right.
I mean, eight thousand dollars isn't going to get us near, you know, constructing the new water treatment plant. And. So I, I don't think enough revenue would be.
No, no, and I, I'm not saying it's going to be a million dollars, that's going to be, that's going to be coming in, however. Like Commissioner Davis said, we're going to be able to. See who is using more water and things of that nature. Additionally, we're in the process of changing our water and sewer fees, we have a study. That's commencing here shortly, I believe. So would we be able to include that in the study? And say, hey, look, we have X number of. Citizens in town that would like to add this in. How would we go about billing for that in, in a different nature? For what our current water and sewer fees are, because obviously if they're using excess amount of water, it's going to jump them into the next tier. However, we decide to do this and things of that nature, so could there be additional revenue coming in? And then Mr. Vaughn and the other residents have had made mention, like, they're well aware that they're going to have to pay for this and they're going to have to pay the extra things. But they want to just be able to separate the two of them. In addition, I think, you know, I says, Mr. Golden, you know, we're, we're sitting and, you know, yourself, myself, Commissioner Davis are sitting in these. Water meetings, the stormwater and, and things of that nature. Is that going to have an effect on long-term projections for anything like that because of how it affects sewer and things of that nature?
Yeah, so regarding the aspect, your first question of, you know, eighty two hundred dollars is great, but. Personally, on a planning perspective, it would be better to put that tap towards a, a single family dwelling. A dwelling, because then we get the eight thousand dollar sewer tap. We get the twelve hundred dollar impact fee and other fees as well, so I think it's more beneficial to use it as a new business or. A new, you know, revenue generating, tax generating source. But regarding stormwater, that's also one of my concerns. If for whatever reason, someone would fall asleep and their irrigation just continues or. You know, something would continue to just keep running and running and running, well, you're going to create all your pollution, it's going to pick up all your pollution from your, your lawns. It's going to go into the street, it's going to pick up all the pollution from the roads. Then it's going to go into your stormwater basin and it's going to create really in the long run, a shorter lifespan of your basin. I know it seems kind of extreme to say that, but in the long run, it does. Causes more pollution.
I think part of the request also is. If you, if you subtract out the water that's used for irrigation purposes, then that reduces the amount. Of their sewer portion of their bill. And as we do this water and sewer rate, it's my understanding in conversations with the USDA. That there's a possibility or probability of the sewer rates coming down as part of this study as well.
But the water rates are going to go up.
Right.
More than likely, yes, it's in speaking with M D E and USDA, more than likely, yes. And then the big caveat is we have not figured out how to do the billing side yet. We were just waiting on that portion of it. But I can just pass on the information that, that staff and I have gotten through our research and talking to other municipalities and the concerns that. Our water and sewer superintendent has as well as our director of public works and myself and Zach. Just pass on that information.
I have. I guess before, before Mr. Vaughn. Speaks to us tonight, I guess two things from what we're talking about here. We're using Thermont as an example. That's I guess worst case scenario, because they treat it. If we were to proceed with this, the way Thermont treats it is, is a whole new tap, but I, I don't think that's the route that we're looking at here, it's just a, a separate meter.
So basically what they say they do is they, if someone likes, would like a separate meter for water for things like. Grass watering or filling pools to avoid paying sewer fees for those things. They require it as a water connection service as well as a water, well, we don't do water impact fees. That's how they treat it. This was the only one that we spoke to, I'm not saying there's not other municipalities out there, but this is the only one we spoke to that allows this. Obviously, you know, if, if it's something that the board wants to pursue, then we're going to have to reach out to some other municipalities and get. Obviously, you know, if if it's something that the board wants to pursue, then we're going to have to reach out to some other municipalities and get additional information on how they handle it.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, that's that's crazy, though. I mean, eighty two hundred dollars that no one's going to want to do this.
And that's probably why they do it, to discourage the practice.
And I'm also concerned because Mr. Golden mentioned there's a hundred and thirty taps left, approximately a hundred and thirty taps. Now that's, we're I I think Brookfield's already taken care of, correct? But but we're looking at a lot of new homes that are not part of that equation. So we're pursuing all this growth. And now we're back to again that we don't have enough taps. Correct. Yeah, Brookfield's taken into consideration. Emmett Ridge two is was taken into consideration, the comprehensive plan. However, we still are still at that hundred and thirty tap range. You know, we have a a manufacturer looking to come in that, you know, they're going to take a
Yeah.
portion of it because they are a water consumer. It's just a concern for planning purposes. Fraley Farm. Fraley Farm, um, McNair.
Property.
There possibly. Yeah.
We're not counting those.
We're not counting those. So that would take off. It would skim off the top.
And then you have the the.
We don't have enough taps for those developments, basically.
We don't. We do not have enough taps for those developments.
Not yet.
Right. And that's why the water treatment plant there in Emma Gardens is imminent, probably three to five years to start planning purposes for that.
Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir. Thank you.
Your uh, mic's off.
After yourself, we're going to hear from Mr. Vaughn. So.
Okay. Now, we have our tap fees eighty two hundred dollars. That's our tap fee.
Correct.
That's not the construction of the service to be put into the property.
Correct.
You got the construction service. You're going to have to tear up the street. You're going to have to hire a contractor to come in, put it in. All for irrigation.
If it's a new one.
Besides, we also have to, we have to treat, we have to make that water that we're we're making the same water for that tap as we're making for a tap for a house. So we have to, we're paying for treating the water to be used for irrigation.
He's already paid for it.
Look at two, but um, I don't know how else you would do it, but it's eighty two hundred dollars fee that you would have to pay you, but they're going to be paying other stuff besides.
Yeah, so we're we're right now, we're talking about Brookfield and the newer houses already have the system set in place. So they would just have to hire a plumber to come in.
And connecting up, yeah, but
Exactly.
Yeah, but they don't have the services going in if they're going to put a new irrigation on it.
For for other houses, correct?
If they want, if this goes through.
Correct.
They're going to have to put a whole new service out to the street.
That's right. If it's a house, it's not already set up and equipped for the irrigation, then yes. So say somebody I in a part of town that does not have a newer home that's not already equipped for it, then yes, they would have to pay for all the connections.
That are putting out there now.
They supposedly have it.
Yeah.
Would they? They have two lines or it's all coming off the same line?
So from my understanding is the line that comes into the house and then your meters here that that staff reads quarterly.
So they have a Y.
So my understanding is there's somewhere along that lateral that comes in, there's another line that goes off of that.
They have a Y.
Irrigation purposes and that, then I guess the idea would be then you put a meter here so that anything that goes out is red.
Yeah, they have.
Now, how all that would work internally, I don't, I don't know yet.
I I see what Commissioner Sweeney's saying, you know, for for existing homes. Yeah, they most likely, no one's going to want to rip everything up to do it. If we proceed with this, you know, you can't predict the future. My my hunch is that only a select few individuals will take advantage of it anyway. I I don't see this being a a huge um I want to say popular thing, but you know, I I don't think many people would utilize it. But anyway, we we told Mr. Vaughn, he was going to speak. See here, I'm jumping in, sorry.
Okay, um, Mr. Vaughn, are you there, sir?
Yes, can you all hear me?
We can. Uh, could you do this? Uh, we're going to treat you as if you are here in the meeting. So could you please identify yourself and provide your home address and then
Sure.
Uh, you will have the timer and the floor will be yours for four minutes.
Sure.
Thank you.
Name's Jason Vaughn and I live at fourteen eleven Ramblewood Drive. Am I good to speak?
Yes, go ahead. The floor is yours.
Oh, okay. All right, thanks. Um, well, thanks for for giving me the uh, time to speak. Uh, yeah, pretty much you guys covered most of it. Uh, but the gist of it, again, I've never dealt with this before. So, I mean, if there's things that I didn't mention that you guys found, great. But I didn't think, at least in my opinion, that you really needed any kind of extra taps or anything. Like in my house, I already have irrigation. I didn't need to go to the street. I didn't need to do any special taps. Everything is all in my lawn, you know, all the heads, all the lines are in my lawn, all throughout my yard. And then literally one line goes into my basement, which taps into my main line. And that's it. And I can turn that on and off separately. Like, it's already winterized. It's off. It's not even being used. I have a wireless controller that I control through Wi-Fi in my garage and it's already fail safe. So like if there's a line that's leaking somewhere, it stops, it turns off. Um, I set the timer to go off and I follow all the town's time limits anyways and to go off early in the morning. It doesn't affect pressure of anybody. It runs and it's done. So really getting a separate meter wouldn't have, wouldn't make me water anymore. Wouldn't encourage it. It's just it's just a way for us to save money on our bill because most of my bill is sewer. You know, I have no issues paying for water. I flush. I have no issues for paying for water that I take in a shower. You know, even wash my car. I don't really care. It's just when I water my lawn, it it just goes back into the ground. So I just didn't feel like I should have to pay sewage or water that's not being re-treated. You know what I mean? So at least I thought, unless I have to do more research, that it would be nothing more than obviously administrative things on your end to change the bill, but I would get a plumber. I would get the plumber. I would get all that to hook the lines up in my basement, have a separate meter installed, which I'd also pay for. And all that would do is just refilter the water through that meter on that separate irrigation line. The rest of the house would stay the same. And that's that. And again, that's just the gist of how at least I thought it would work. I didn't think there need to be roads dug up or separate taps or anything. It has nothing. It's just using the same tap I already have. It's just like like they said, like she said a minute ago, it just reroutes. There would be another meter on that line for the irrigation that would you know, separate the bill from irrigation use verse, you know, the rest of the house.
Thank you, sir. So Mr. Golden, just a sort of an estimate. So if a household has that second meter, and we're basing it on, let's say, a quarter to a half acre property with, you know, pervious surface grass. How much of a savings does that represent related to their sewer bill? Do we have any estimation of something like that?
She may, sure.
Okay. Oh, Ms. Wells, could you turn your mic on?
Okay, so I'm just going to read from his email. Um, and it looks like example of how the WSSC water bill is calculated. And again, that's Prince George's in Montgomery County. Um, water consumption rate, uh, that's he has that estimated at two hundred and seven dollars and forty five cents. Sewage usage rate without the submeter. So irrigation, complete water usage, no submeter, sewer portion is two ninety seven. And then um, he estimates daily consumption for irrigation purposes of two hundred gallons. Which is ninety one dollars and forty four cents would be the sewage portion of it. So it drops it down by at least using WSSC's calculations, it drops it down by two hundred. I would have to do our calculations to see how it how it would work here um, with our billing. Um, I mean, I don't know, average daily consumption of two hundred gallons. I don't imagine that's every single day. I would certainly hope not because that's almost the equivalent of the daily allotted usage for one house. So that's I if we want the calculation, I'd have to go do that. I have Cole do it tomorrow.
Okay, thank you.
Calculation include our basic rate because each each house gets charged no matter how much water we use. I could use just a little bit of water, but everybody gets charged one basic rate.
Right. The base rate is up to six thousand gallons. Um, and I'll tell you, that is something else that's being looked at during this water and sewer rate study is the tiers and how how we calculate everything. So all those rates and everything is going to change going forward. I think you're going to see varied impacts. It might actually save some people money if we do change the six thousand gallons. Um, but anyway, so I could have just do an estimate for now on what it would be, just using these amount of gallons.
Okay. Any other questions for staff regarding this item?
I guess, yes. Hypothetically speaking, if we, although staff suggested it's not a good idea, if the board considered it is a good idea or maybe a modification, something addressing maybe homes built after a certain time or homes that have this separate irrigation system pre-installed. If we were to put it on an agenda item, we're not looking. It would be like well into the irrigation season anyway, correct?
Correct. Um. I think it would be beneficial to get into this water and sewer rate study to see where the rates end up, what the recommendations are. We have to have some public hearings and all that. And then based off of staffing right now and in current workloads, you're probably looking at a couple of months before we could bring this back.
And maybe you could check out for more other than third month somewhere else and has them.
Yeah, I we would, we would certainly look into some different municipalities and see if if they do this and what their recommendations are. Something that's more comparable to to Emmitsburg than than the WSSC. And that's, I I mean, that's the best that we could probably do is recommend a code change, you know, down the road after we do all our research and as we, as the mayor mentioned, or somebody mentioned, we'll be getting into the budget here in February.
Yeah.
Um, so.
As an alternative, do we have any limits at this time related to cisterns? I knew that a a number of years ago, rainwater collection, we had some limitation regarding the like the the tank size or the cistern size.
I just think they're prohibited in the code, I believe.
Cisterns are.
Yeah.
For for sewage purposes.
Okay.
I believe.
I don't, I'm not sure then.
We do have a lot of people that participate in the rain barrel program.
Kind of.
Yeah, we do have a lot of people that participate in that. And we're getting ready to order another round of rain barrels.
Yeah, next, next year, probably.
So what I'm thinking is um is it even is it money well spent investigating the submeter piece? Or would we be better off pursuing a cistern type setup or a or some sort of larger rain capture system in an effort to you know, reduce that spending all the way around?
And that's actually something the Stormwater Committee is going to be investigating. If a fee is in fact recommended, that would be a way to get credit on the fee.
So it'll get a waiver on that?
Not a waiver, not a full waiver, but a credit on your bill.
Okay.
So we would actually recommend people getting cisterns and using that as their, you know, water irrigation system.
Sure, okay.
Yeah, you're right, Commissioner Ritz. It is cisterns for sewer.
Yeah.
I was mistaken. Okay, so I guess just to to address Mr. Vaughn real quick, you know, thank you for bringing this to our attention. I know it's been several, several months in the works. It it sounds like we're not saying no. Obviously, it's something that the board potentially could be voting on, but um I I understand what you're saying, you know, you're the 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 money that you're spending on water is not actually being used for sewers. I I totally get that. So I just wanted to throw that out there. It looks like we're we're looking at possibilities. It's probably not the answer that you want to hear right now, but we're looking into it.
The hard part, Commissioner Ritz, is that while it doesn't count towards sewer, I think the things that Commissioner Davis and I have been learning throughout our stormwater uh, Zoom sessions is that while it doesn't count towards the sewer, it does have an effect on our overall grades and or points for the town in regards to what we're being told by the federal government. Uh, like how many trees we have to plant and things like that. It it does have an effect on those numbers
Okay.
long term. And with the new four year, four year, five year cycle.
Five year.
Five year cycle coming up in twenty three. Would us making these changes have an effect on the numbers going forward?
Hmm.
Like how many trees we have to plant, uh, you know, and and things of that nature. So I think that's going to have to be taken into consideration as well because if those numbers are going to create a giant effect on it as well, and it's going to cost the town even more and we're going to have to find more grants and and funding for stuff like that, then we're going to have to figure out the best way to make the town not have to spend more money on oth- other areas.
I I think, I'm sorry, I think, yeah, and you asked a question earlier about the 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 study that's ongoing. So is is it, I I guess, did we address that this evening? Is that something that the the who's who's the, is that the University of Maryland?
The water rate study, water sewer connection fee study is, it's company called New Gen.
Okay. So that's not part of the scope of their work, though, or is it? This is like, um, New Gen, looking at what.
It's it's two different studies we're doing right now. So you have University of Maryland that's helping us with the stormwater. New Gen's doing the water sewer fees.
Okay.
And adjusting that. So it's kind of a crossover between the two right now because water and sewer numbers will obviously be affected if we go forward with the submeters for this. But additionally, that additional water that's being used, they're going to calculate that into the numbers for the town in that that water usage and what's considered wastewater and things of that nature, unfortunately.
So that's something that would. But what we're discussing tonight's not going to be part of that report, though, is it?
It'll just depend on when the report's done.
Okay.
That's that's the tricky part with this because while I agree that there should be a second meter for it because of, you know, as Commissioner Davis said, we're we're asking people to plant more trees and get credit for these numbers and and things of that nature, which we want to encourage. And we've had these conversations with University of Maryland, like, hey, if you know, the the twelve of us in this room right now plant a tree, is that number going to count for the town?
Mm hmm.
Well, in order to keep those trees and keep everything going, we're going to have to water them and do those things, which we want to encourage. But at the same time, that excess water is going to affect us long term with the Chesapeake water and everything else that the federal government's regulating on us as well right now.
Yeah.
So it's a double edged sword at the end of the day on how we can kind of address this because we have to address both situations at the same time. And there's a huge crossover in, yeah, we want to help the citizens who want to do this. We want to encourage them to plant the trees. But is it going to come back to haunt us in the next five year cycle with the stormwater management stuff?
Yeah.
Which, as Frank and I have sat through on many times, is like a drill to the head in the rules and regulations on what's going on with that. And we can only get so far ahead and, you know, all these different things. And and we can only plant so many trees before this is a forest. And you know, how how are we going to do this?
Yeah, okay. I guess, yeah, what I was getting at there was the two groups, how do they interact together? And if they're asked to do more, it'd be outside of the current scope of work. But I guess you know, what's part of the contract proposal, so to speak, so.
I think it'll be, it it's going to be outside the scope of both, but they're going to coincide at some point in time, they're going to run into each other. It's just then who we have to hire to address studying both projects at the same time.
So potentially, we could be looking at um, revisiting all this. When when do these things wrap up?
We have four more meetings.
Yeah, I I mean, at the end of the day, I would highly recommend residents investigating cisterns because they're excellent tools where you get free rainwater from. And uh, I'll plug Zenith Sykes in. I know he loves showing his cistern system. It's amazing. And he harvests every single drop of rain on his roof. So just plugging him in there for a little bit.
He has numbers too.
He has numbers and every data and everything. But the short term, I think the answer is looking at cisterns.
All right. Is there any further discussion related to agenda item number two?
Yeah, I just have one more comment.
Mr. Davis, yes, sir.
It it seems like that the the town's encouraging half a million dollar homes being built now. And along with that comes things such as irrigation system. So if that's what we're pushing, we have to look at at the features that come with them. So you know, we can't build a cheaper home in Emmitsburg. It's a half a million dollars now seems to be the going rate. So that's that's part of the features with it. So I think we should take a look at that all. So that's, that's part of the features with it. So I think we should take a look at that also. And for the use of water, Mr. Vaughn's not going to let his grass die. He's going to pay the little bit of extra and he's still going to use the water. So it's whether we. That's all that's.
Mr. Davis, you're enjoying the meetings the same way Commissioner Burns is. The, the MS four, the, the capture, yeah. The end product of that committee, is that going to be a report provided to the board or?
Yes, so we're, we're going to have the presentation.
To clarify, the committee to which Commissioner Burns and Commissioner Davis belong.
Yes, so the Stormwater Utility Committee, we will be presenting, or they will be presenting our final report and recommendation from the, the committee. At your meeting, probably in March or April.
Okay, terrific. Is this something that committee would weigh in on? I mean, this piece, you feel, or?
I mean, ultimately, I think.
Your purview.
There, the, the purview of this is to gain as much knowledge.
Okay.
On everything as possible. Now, the hard part is going to be when they redo the study. And set our numbers for the next five-year cycle. What's going to be reflected in that, based on what's being done with the stormwater or the water and everything right now?
Yeah, with my training in MS four, I can guarantee you a hundred percent that the University of Maryland would not recommend this system. Just because of the MS four impacts, they would, we, we spoke about cisterns and other things. They would recommend cisterns.
Okay, so they're against the consumption piece, is that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
And pollution piece.
The hard, the, the, the thing that's not addressed, and Commissioner Davis can probably attest this as well. The thing that's not addressed is when that water runs off the driveways, when it runs off the grass. It does permeate into other areas of the town, and those numbers are what reflect the pollution that roll into the Chesapeake at some point in time.
Correct.
And we can get into the arguments for that on another day.
Yeah, so we have the tree conundrum and we have the overflow conundrum.
But see, I'm going to, I'm going to throw it out there, too. I, I don't think doing this is going to cause more consumption. I think.
It's not the consumption piece that they look at. It's the, it's the runoff that they look at. And while we, while yes, we say everything gets soaked back into the ground. The MS four doesn't see it that way.
No, but I'm, I'm just alluding to what Mr. Golden said, that the University of Maryland would frown upon the consumption part of it, you know, if we proceeded this way. Unless I'm misunderstanding you, it sounds like that. If we proceed, then people will be irrigating their lawns more, so to speak, and they're consuming more water. I, I, I don't, is that what you were?
Yeah.
Referring to or?
Yeah, I, I think, you know, I would make an argument that people would water their lawns more if their sewer bills reduced. You know, right now, there may be some people that are not doing it because they know their sewer bill is going to double.
Or you might have responsible individuals like Mr. Vaughn who sets it on a timer and actually follows the code when he's supposed to water.
Right. No, he does. Yeah, he's great with that, but unfortunately, not everybody's like that.
No.
Okay. Mr. Ritz.
I'm finished.
Are you okay? All right.
Yes.
Any other commissioner? Any last comments related to this item agenda two? Okay, very good. Mr. Vaughn, thank you for weighing in. Staff, thank you. We're going to move now to. Look at agenda item number three, which has been postponed. So we leap past three to agenda item number four. Approval of sewer connection agreement with five oh two Main Street and. Potential authorization of mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration.
Thank you. This is the second piece to the, essentially the puzzle. The board approved five hundred East Main Street. I believe it was two meetings ago from Mr. Sloan. This is the follow-up to the Mar Casa building, which is known as the Creamery at five oh two East Main Street. I'll just highlight some areas of the agreement. The agreement has been signed by Mar Casa Holdings. And their witness, as well as our legal town count, or town attorney, Ms. Powell. So basically, it says that paragraph three. Rather than dispute how who has the obligation to correct or repair any connection errors, defects or cause for of damage, town has agreed. At its cost and expense to install a new sewer line from the building to the town sewage collection system. Number two, the town shall install a sewer lateral line from the Mar Casa building. To the town main line located along East Main Street. Number three, the works shall include installing a new lateral line coming from the east side of the structure. Of the property line and shall extend the line beyond the property line to the town mayor sewer line. Connecting to the line on East Main Street. The town will be responsible for all the work up to the building. However, the town will not complete the hookup of the line within the building. The town's going to be required to provide advance notice of the dates and times of the work. All the work will be performed by Kelco, the town's contractor, which we use Kelco quite frequently. The town will restore the Mar Casa property following completion of the work to the extent. And it's described in Exhibit B, but basically, any damage to the property incurred during construction. Will be repaired, restored to its original condition. Portions of the asphalt parking lot will be replaced to the same depth as the remaining area, and the surface will be consistent with the existing area. And that's basically the highlights of it. As soon as the board approves this tonight. Dan is going to schedule Kelco, they're going to do both properties at the same time. To eliminate any disruptions to the properties. And so we're just looking for board approval for this agreement, authorize the mayor to sign.
Okay, and to be naive, that's an any-weather action, correct? Like in cold weather, they can get it done versus.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Defer to our expert here, Mr. Sweeney. All right, are there any other questions for staff related to this item?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
I guess, I don't know if this is common knowledge or not, but the, the applicant, the owner of the property is concerned regarding the timing of this. Afraid that if any work is done, that the asphalt that is repaired, something could happen in the winter. And then they would be responsible for patching it back up again in the spring. And I know that they were looking to. At least schedule this out when weather started to return warmer. Is, are we considering that, or is this going to be? We approve tonight and we want to run with it ASAP?
Well, I, I think what the contractor wants to do is do both properties at the same time because there will be similar connections.
Okay.
And I know Mr. Sloan's been waiting for two months now.
I didn't know that. I, I, they already proceeded since we agreed to that two months ago.
Yes, yes. And then I think there were some issues with the work being done and then scheduling the contractor. Then the holidays and COVID, and I think a lot of, unfortunately, this, the supply chain. It is taking a long time for our contractors to get materials in. So I think it's in the best interest for both parties that we at least get the work scheduled. We have talked to her about the asphalt, and I think everybody was in agreement at the time of the signing.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, I, it's been several weeks. I, I just remembered that this was.
She signed this on.
It was sometime last year.
It's not dated. She signed it shortly after our December meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, like the next day or two.
Mr. Ritz, do you think this is something to cause the vote to be held, or do you feel this is something that we can move forward with?
Well, that aside, the agreement itself, I think is, is great, you know, this needs done. So I, I don't want to hold that part up.
And as far as I know, the asphalt piece was worked out between both attorneys. Mar Casa's attorney and our town attorney. I know they had conversations going back and forth, so.
Okay.
I would assume whatever was discussed was sufficient to the property owner. So that she then signed the agreement.
I did, I did not, I'm sorry, I did not reach back out to her.
No, 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 I'm just saying that's my understanding of how everything transpired.
I know there was concern several weeks ago, so maybe something happened and that, that's on me for not inquiring or asking, but.
Nope.
Okay.
Okay, therefore, is there a motion to accept the sewer connection agreement as presented?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Davis's motion?
Second.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Commissioner Davis. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Thank you. Sequentially, now turn to agenda item number five. This is for discussion and consideration, continuation of policy twenty dash zero one ball field reservation fees. We again turn to staff.
Okay, just real quick, as we were reviewing policies and moving forward and getting. Preparing for upcoming ball field usage, park usage, planning what the needs are going to be this, this upcoming season. Policy twenty dash oh one, which the board approved. January sixth of twenty twenty, essentially removed all ball field fees for single-day use, league use and tournament use. That were originally put in place by policy dash oh one. And at the time of the meeting, the board put a sunset clause that said. Policy P twenty oh one shocks fire twelve months from the date of passage, which would have been January. Six twenty twenty-one, due to continuation of COVID and the, the, the constraints that it put on everybody. The policy was content, was extended another year. And then, after reviewing this, that. Per the policy, the fields, ball field fees were to be put back in place unless it was extended by the board. So that's why this policy has come back for, forward to the board to determine what they want to do as far as the fees are concerned. Related to ball fields. I will tell you that Terry Ray did some research. Related to the ball field fees in, in response to some concerns that were brought to our attention. And I discussed these with the mayor earlier today or yesterday. And basically, the consensus of most of the municipalities that we talked to. Tontown, Boonsburg, Brunswick, Walkerville. They basically do free field usage in exchange for total maintenance, including their ball field mix. Their towns will handle mowing the fields and any larger upgrade issues or larger maintenance issues. So basically, what they say is you, they signed an MOU with the leagues and say, okay, you have to provide the ball field mix and whatever. Brunswick had a really good example of what they do. So basically Brunswick says they, you know, they break it out really well. They do electrical, water. Maintain the parking lot, general cleanup, ensure there's no damage. They provide the trash receptacles and they provide port pots, which the town already does. And in response, then their leagues that utilize the field are responsible for all the care and maintenance of their game fields. Maintain the fields, make sure they're in good condition, painting and preparing fields for all their events. All care and maintenance of all buildings and fencing. I might, I would disagree with the fencing. I, I think the town should maintain the maintenance for the fencing. And then they go on, they apparently have scoreboard and lighting, which we don't have. And then that league, it would be responsible for any concession items. So I talked to the mayor about that and, and we were in agreement that we, we liked that proposal. Because, you know, the town does spend, you know, in fiscal year twenty-one, we spent about eighteen thousand five hundred. On repairs, maintenance and capital outlay. And fiscal year twenty-two, it was only over about ten thousand dollars. So, I mean, the town is paying for all the maintenance right now, and, and I think to ask the leagues for. Like what Brunswick does, I think is very reasonable in exchange for, for no fees. And if that's the case, and if that's the direction the board would want to go, then I would have to draft, we could either continue. You could continue policy P twenty oh one for another year. And in the interim, as the year goes by, we can bring an additional policy that would address what we just talked, or what I just talked about. Did I miss anything, Mr. Mayor? Okay.
Thank you again, we're, if I may, just. We're finding out we're, they have a series of retirements this year later on and now, you know, the people moving on and. It's this pity, we're starting to look for money, and we realize that maybe some people we have on our staff right now are, are underpaid. And to replace them, we're, we're just looking at a little contribution to help us out, push things along. And I know, I know we give a lot of things away to a lot of people, but it, it is a active passive. Wonderful Park Community Park and, and Myers Park and. That's all. And, and anyway, the reason it's here is because you, we were obligated to bring it back to you to look at. That, that's the only reason. And we, you said rested for a year, you had fees going into a year, and said, cut it out for COVID. And so we're here, so it's, it's, it's up to you all, but, you know, we're. You got to grease the chute here for, we need, we need income to keep us, and we're. Still a little struggling coming out of a. The COVID. Which we may still be in, but not as bad as before. Thank you.
Okay, so before we turn to board discussion, we have signed up for public comment, Mr. Kevin Hagan. Mr. Hagan, I'll invite you to come forward. Please introduce yourself, provide your address, and then you have your four minutes and the light will guide you along.
Kevin Hagan, thirteen oh four Huntley Circle. So there's been a lot of wild rumor and speculation about this. And the community, and I've gotten some questions. I know Commissioner Davis has gotten some questions of huge fees and everything. So I'm glad to see it being brought back. And, but in my conversation with Commissioner Davis, I asked. Why doesn't this go to our standing recreations committee and let them do the grunt work? Find out what's going on. Why is it here? Why isn't it at the recreation committee and let them hear from the community, see what the community feels is beneficial to them? Recreation and parks is not something that's ever going to make money. It's never going to break even, and if anybody thinks it does, it's a foolish thought. But I think it needs to go back to recreation and let them figure it out, what the community wants. This is the wrong forum to be deciding this right now.
Thank you, sir. Okay. All right, I'm turning to the board for discussion. Mr. Davis, I know this has been of interest to you. Would you like to start? You don't have to, sir.
Sure, I'll start. First, I'd like to see a breakdown on what the ten thousand dollars was used for, or where that came from for the, for the ball fields. Because I think the only thing we were really doing was we bought the ball field mix because everything that was done, to the best of my knowledge. Other than the backstop that was upgraded. Last year was done by the leagues. We had, two years ago, we, the Thurmont Little League put all new roofs. On the, all the dugouts, concession stand. The Babe Ruth and the rec team put, put the new batting cage out by the big baseball field. And on a weekly basis, Thurmont Little League had workers up here on Thursday. That were donated by a local business, doing the dragging and the, the weeding and, and things like that. So I think pretty much all that's been taken care of and. Needless to say, the, that what this has done for businesses in town by having baseball back in town and Thurmont picking up something that we couldn't do. And, and we could go back to, to not having it again. And, and then to bring in the Lions Club, the, the money that the Lions Club that is going back into the community is making off the concession stands. The, the, the fields were run down before Thurmont came back here and, and started working on this stuff. And, you know, there was, we, we mowed them, but that's all we did because, I mean, the dugouts were terrible. And they were, they were trashy and, you know, the town staff tried to keep up as much as they could. And I'm sure we're not saying they didn't do their job, but. To, to see activity at that, all those ball fields every night of the week, I just think it's part of the, part of the, the good feature of this. Town, small town atmosphere that we want to have. And then to go on to the other parts of the recreation, you know, the, 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 the swimming pool was showing. And then to go on to the other parts of the recreation, you know, the 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 swimming pool was showing a loss every every summer of what forty to fifty thousand dollars a a loss. So we're we're putting that out there. There is no fee for the dog parks. And I know the mayor's argument was the older people don't use the ball fields. I don't have a dog. I've never used a swimming pool. I don't play frisbee golf. I'm too scared to ride on the bike trail. You know, so you know, all those things I don't do either, but I believe in them all. I I think they're all part of 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 the town. As a matter of fact, the bike trails, we actually throw money off the logging into into those trails. So we're throwing money at that. Why are we picking on baseball? I just, and it's not going to make us that much money. If 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 that charging for the ball fields is going to balance our budget, we got a problem. Because I don't think we're going to take in that much money off that. It's just something else that that parents are going to have to pay that fee. They're already paying a fee of a hundred dollars a kid for uniforms and things like that. And then if they throw another another fee onto them, that's going to go back to the parents. And I just and I did, I I'll tell you this, I don't really like to use social media to to do things, but that's the only way you get to talk to people. And I did put something out on Facebook and I asked the people to reply to me on my town email. It didn't become a topic on Facebook. And I didn't get any responses in favor of adding back the fees. That's what I got.
I don't have the breakdown in front of me what the ten thousand dollars was for. I can certainly get that. My guess would be mostly they were grant matches that we did a lot of grants for the ball fields the last two years. But I can certainly get that. And and like I like I mentioned, that's the mayor and I were listening to to, you know, your concerns and I would have loved to met with you. But the concerns and and talking with and Terry doing all that research. And that's why we we have come back with the suggestion and and this is all on the board. These these fees are not it doesn't matter to me, you know, it's it's just staff recommendations off their research that they do and it 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 doesn't matter to us and you're right, it's not going to make or break our budget one way or the other. But that's why we came back with the recommendation of similar to what Brunswick did and what the other municipalities are doing that basically in exchange for free use of the fields throughout your seasons, your practices, your games, your tournaments. We would ask you to do X, Y, and Z as far as maintenance is concerned. And 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 have the MOUs. And I know Brunswick does the MOU for five years. Or is it Myersville? I get my municipalities confused, but they do extended MU MOUs. So it's written that says the league will take care of this, the town will take care of this, and there's there's no confusion then.
Do we have a formal agreement with the Thurmont League or the Babe Ruth League regarding the maintenance piece?
We have a
In writing that
We have a general agreement with that each league that utilizes the field, as far as I know, Thurmont Little League uses the field and then Mid Maryland uses the field back behind the office. And as far as I know, I think we did a three year agreement with Thur- Thurmont Little League. I don't know what year we're on. I could try to pull it up real quick. But it's one that we do when you submit.
There's documentation that says here's our here the Emmitsburg, here's what the town's expectations are for you, the organization. And they're obliged to meet those obligations for for in exchange for use of the fields. Is that fair to characterize it that way?
I have not read the agreement in a while.
Okay. Mr. Davis, does that sound accurate to you? Like basically saying you do this to take care of the field and will make the fields available to you?
Yeah, and I think they've actually went above and beyond by bringing in a batting cage and things like that. So it's it's not like they're not holding their they're putting the 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 new roofs on that. I know way where they asked to do that. They did that out of the goodness of their heart. And I did get a nasty gram for not getting the permit to get those roofs on. But it's just I I just, I don't much, you know, I I think one of my first meetings two and a half years ago, we talked about the the Frisbee Golf and that was going to be maintenance free. And I think that has been everything but maintenance free. And now we're worried about we can't get it mowed. We got to, you know, there's there's other problems, issues with that. So that that's and I'm okay with that. I don't have a problem with that, you know, but if you're going to charge for for the ball field, just charge for the dog park. I mean, we're putting money into the dog park. And I don't want to charge for anything. So I'm not, I used to have dog poop on my steps in the morning, but you know, I I don't want to charge for anything. When it comes to the parks, other than swimming pool, to try to cut a little bit of that loss, but that's that's just me.
So so Mr. Davis, I'm gonna here's a thought and then and I'm bringing this to you because you're very, you've got a lot of energy for this. I'll say it that way at the moment. If we were to create a more formal agreement with these teams as we move forward in exchange for a use, like the maintenance piece and what our expectations would be, where there would not be a direct fee, would that be satisfactory to what your goals are for the use of the fields?
Well, yeah, I mean, I'd like to see what we're going to ask them to do.
Okay.
You know, and and as long as we're reasonable.
Sure.
Because, you know, they 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 have been doing more than I ever expected.
I'm gonna I'm gonna jump in. I'm sorry, I don't mean other commissioners?
Yeah.
Anybody else have, let me just stick to that question first. And would you be comfortable with looking at the formal arrangement of defining expectations from the clubs? So we're not charging a fee for use of these fields? Well, that so that that is in place?
I can't find the agreements on the I drive.
Okay.
To see exactly how it's broken out on in the agreement of like, does it specify ma- what the maintenance would be? I I can't find it.
Commissioner, Commissioner Donna.
Okay, go for it.
I think we also need to address the elephant in the room and the fact that Frederick County just came in and bought that hundred and twelve acres off of seventy six and Moder Station. And we need to keep the relationship as strong as possible with all these teams because at some point in time in the near future, in the next three to five years, they're going to open that park there with all those fields and things of that nature. We don't want to lose all those teams coming into town because of fees and things of that nature. We want to keep that relationship as strong as possible before Frederick County opens that. And we lose all those people not no longer coming into town and going to that park instead.
Do we have any idea what their fees are down the road toward Walkersville?
I mean, the county, I think they've got field fees.
Yeah, the county, the county's going to have field fees. I know, like for lacrosse purposes, like my son plays with the Walkersville there. Whatever, I can't remember the the acronym they have down there, but there's been a lot of discussions with that because of football and the lights and stuff like that. And I know that they're addressing some of the same issues we are right now with their park down there in Woodsboro or not Woodsboro, Walkersville. And the park there where they also have frisbee golf and football and lacrosse and baseball and everything else. I know they've run into a lot of the same issues that we're addressing at the same time here. And, you know, they're privately funded through the town and things of that nature. And I don't think a lot of the fees fall on the participants as much as they do on the town or the groups that are renting the fields and things of that nature. So I know like with club lacrosse, we that we play down there and soccer and everything else.
Do you know if the soccer team or the lacrosse team is vested in the maintenance?
They are.
Okay, alright.
I don't think there's a, I don't think there's a park in the area where there's a group, an organized group that isn't in charge of maintaining the fields in some way, shape or form. Whether it be soccer, whether it be lacrosse, field hockey, football, you know, you always have the parents out there lining the fields, doing everything under the sun. I mean, I'd line fields all fall for soccer. Pregame and stuff like that. It's always the parents or the the community groups that are doing it to use the fields for that purpose. So you know, I think if we did set something up where there was an agreement that there are no fees to use the fields, however, the maintenance is done in some way, shape or form. I mean, I think Thurmont and all those groups have gone above and beyond with what they've done over the last two years to to help maintain and make those fields usable and beautiful.
Okay, Mr. Sweeney, are you comfortable with the arrangement where we would look at a ti- a team committing to maintenance and the the parks being available? Bring it back to the committee.
I think we should tonight policy in place we have now. And and then
Commissioner Sweeney, your mic's off.
Oh.
Let the town manager find the agreement, the 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 three year agreement that we have and bring it back to the Parks Committee and let them go over and and then get the feedback on what if anything needs to be added to it before and that or if it needs to be updated. And then they can re-sign it.
I'm sorry. I did find the agreement and it's it's very vague. It basically says the town's ordinance, regulation, and other laws are deemed to be part of this contract, sections of the town. This has to do with rules and regulations and maintaining premises. It's directly applicable to the use of the facility. The town will provide the dirt initially at the beginning of each season and mow the fields regularly during the season. Organization will maintain the infield after the dirt is provided. That's the only thing that it addresses.
Okay.
So that's that's all that.
A big help, it is. Mr. Ritz, where are you on this?
I was just going to say that, you know, given what Thurmont Little League has already heard already done. I am comfortable right now in making a motion that we just continue at least, continue for twelve months, policy P twenty dash zero one, a continuation of no fees and in that year's timeframe potentially to look at adopting a more formal understanding perhaps. And I agree with Commissioner Sweeney in that it would be nice to have the Parks and Rec Committee look into that, too. I mean, that's the whole purpose of serving on a committee. But right now, I'm 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 ready to just to state, I I'd like to make a motion right now to to extend policy P twenty dash zero one for another twelve months.
I would also add that their agreement ends January thirty first of two thousand and twenty three. So extending it the additional year would coincide with a new league use agreement that would have to go in effect next year.
I'd like to amend my motion then.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to continue no fees for ball field reservations as currently approved per policy P twenty dash zero one effective until January thirty first, two thousand and twenty three. Will that suffice, Mr. President?
The agreement. So the agreement expires on January thirty first, two thousand and twenty three. They're required to submit their field use request or we start taking requests mid-January. I would have it.
Can we go eleven months?
If you go eleven months, I can bring it back at the January meeting, whatever that date may be.
If I try this again with a Jan- December thirty first date, would that work?
That will be perfect.
I would like to amend my motion yet again.
Yes, sir.
To continue policy P twenty dash zero one ball field reservation fees. Having no fees associated with ball field reservations effective until December thirty first, two thousand and twenty two. That was poorly worded, but I think we get to just.
No, it's fine.
I think that satisfies its staff, yes?
This really should be policy P twenty two oh one. Darn it.
No, no.
It really should.
It says this following schedule ball field fees shall take full effect if policy P twenty oh one expires and that what Leslie when I reached out to Leslie on how how to word this, that was basically her recommendation was a continuation of policy P twenty dash oh one.
Very good. All right.
I see what you're
Mr. Davis, is there a second for the motion, Mr. Davis?
I'll second it. Very good.
All right. Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion at this time? So to clarify before we go to vote. Assuming the motion moves forward, we have the expiration date on twelve thirty one. We have as a board, the expectation that we'll hear back from staff with perhaps a more rigorous with with more rigorous language or more specific language related to maintenance expectations?
And handed over to the planning.
And provide that to the Parks and Recreation Committee for their review. Now, to that end, in fairness to that committee, could that be provided to them in, say, October, which will give them time to come forward with something in in a sixty day window?
November.
Okay, so could we make this available to them then on November, bring this to them November fifteenth for their consideration?
Yes, well, the league league will end October thirty first anyway.
Okay.
That's when the little league stops.
And that will give the committee time to vet the leagues and discuss with them these items? Okay, so staff, do we feel we have a clear course of action related to the additional sort of requests? Okay.
Yes.
All right, that's the end of my piece. Therefore, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes? The motion carries five to zero with all commissioners present. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we now turn to setting the agenda for our February seventh, two thousand and twenty two meeting. We turn to you.
All right, I have several items. For the consent agenda, I have the filing of the two thousand and twenty one Planning Commission Report. And then for the regular agenda, I have Ford Zoning Map Amendment application for lot C and D as shown on the final plat of section one. Plat one parcel C, D, and E of Brookfield recorded in plat book number fifty eight. Page forty to the Planning Commission and set public hearing and final vote for March seventh of two thousand and twenty two. I have approval of bid to pour eight concrete slabs for ball field bleachers for consideration. I have the approval of bid to construct and and install eight bleachers for ball fields for consideration. Approval of bid to pave gravel area in Memorial Park for consideration. Those three items are all grant funded. Next, I have the fiscal year twenty one budget transfers to the capital fund for consideration. I have the approval of new employee hire for position of town clerk for consideration. I would have a a slight request. We may ask for a special meeting to get this person hired sooner so that she can she or he can train with Ms. Shaw. I would be looking at January I'm sorry, give me one second. January twenty fourth or thirty first. I will know after our January eighteenth, we have interviews. And then finally, approval of pool management company for the two thousand and twenty two through two thousand and twenty four pool seasons for consideration. That's all I have.
We do have the Planning Commission meeting on the thirty first.
I'm sorry.
With the planning.
Okay, so I would be looking at the twenty fourth for a special meeting.
And that would be a special town meeting, correct?
Special town meeting for the sole purpose of of hiring a new town clerk.
Are there any other of these things that are time sensitive that we could throw in there to maybe knock a couple of them out since we're going to be here? To make the next meeting shorter?
Regarding the items that were
Oh, if we
Yeah, I know. Is there anything that we can?
You mean if we have
Doesn't help you, that's okay.
If we have the second meeting.
Yeah.
Is that what you mean? Is that what you mean? I would imagine like the, the bids are gonna be fairly quick. I don't think these are gonna be too long.
Okay.
Or just all consents, they're
They're pretty straightforward items.
Right.
Timewise.
Yeah.
Mr. Davis, is that what your concern was? I'm sorry.
Timing.
Okay.
If we could knock some of this stuff out, you know.
We may, I mean, between now and then, we may have some other items that we might need to put on that meeting as well, so.
Would there need to be approval for Ms. Ray's position as well?
Uh, we don't even have interviews set up yet for that one, I would imagine. Just to give a quick update, I just spoke with a temp agency about having a temp overlap with Ms. Ray her last two days, and then have a temp in place until we're able to hire a new office coordinator. I would imagine that one coming either mid to late February or the March meeting for that position. And then I'm, I'm sure everybody heard that our new water and sewer operator trainee resigned on Friday with no notice. He had another job that he applied for before coming here and was offered apparently amazing pay rate and sign-on bonus and wow, he just quit. So we will be advertising for that position as well, I think that went live today. It's a very competitive market right now.
I've seen advertising in a variety of places for water and sewer staff at that, that level, so.
Yep.
Okay, any other items regarding the, the February seventh meeting?
No.
No, okay, any other items regarding the? I'm sorry, I don't have the date for the second meeting.
So if, based off the interviews that we're gonna have on January eighteenth, after those interviews are conducted.
Twenty-fourth, is that correct?
Right, it would be January twenty-fourth, I would send out a request through the mayor for that additional meeting, if we have a good candidate.
Okay.
If not, then we'll re-advertise.
All right, so is there a motion to accept the agendas as presented?
Make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
Thank you, is there a second for?
I'll second that.
Thank you, motions were made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Ritz, is ready for the discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? The motion carries five to zero. All right, is there a motion to close the meeting, or any final comments from the board, staff, Mr. Mayor?
I'll make a motion to close the meeting at nine forty-six.
Thank you, is there a second for the motion?
A second.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, good night. The meeting concludes.